All right, I'd like to call over the regrouping in the City Council, City of Perry, April 3rd, 2023 at 6:15. Roll call, please.
Wayne, here. Marshall, here. White, here. Coffee, here. Brown, here. Williams, Vaughn, here. Calderon, here. Strowler.
Here. Do declare a quorum. Will you join me in invocation, please? Heavenly Father, I just thank you for the opportunity to be able to be here and together in this country, in a free country, that we have the right to gather and assemble as we desire. We just ask that you bless our community. We ask that you be with us in making the decisions that we need to make to better the community. We know that this community strives to satisfy you and to glorify you and to make everything shine like your kingdom. I just pray this through your son's name. Amen. All right, we have the consent agenda. There's a whole herd of things.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Wayne?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Strowler?
Yes. Item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to the items on the city agenda. Item five, proclamation, commendation, or portion inquiries by the governing body. I'd like to tell Larry, thank you for getting the lights on for this. They look nice. Speaking of that, I thought Wheatley was going to be here tonight.
Okay, and we would like to make two presentations tonight.
I think he can sit this morning.
Yeah, he can just sit. We would like to thank Jamie.
This is your night, isn't it?
We want to thank you.
Well, you're starting. Oh, you got a picture.
Oh, you gotta take it out of the plastic?
I'm trying to get there. Hang on. There we go. Okay. Smile. Okay.
Thank you. And Bill, we would also like to thank you for your 14 years of service.
Thank you.
You will also, Jamie, get to take your little nameplate.
Oh, okay.
Take that with you.
Okay.
Yours is Bill Strowler, Mayor, so now.
Hold on, what you said she could, you didn't tell me that.
You can't. You don't get yours.
Believe the bunny.
Hey, you guys do know we're coming back next meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, just checking.
We're not kicking you out yet.
Okay. Any other proclamations, commendations, reports by the governing body? All right, thank you. Special presentation, never mind. Item six, items pertaining to Stillwater Medical Center, Perry. Item A, presentation of schematic design phase of Stillwater Medical Center Perry Hospital renovation project by Health Facilities Group LLC, doing business as HFG Architect, Acceptance and Schematic Design Phase.
We tried to, as a part of the agenda, give you some real detail into what the overall renovation of the Perry Hospital will be. It's kind of detailed on page three. Talks about the renovation of the surgery center, what will be placed there, renovation of the existing emergency department, purchase of the new CT machine, purchase of new outpatient physical therapy property, relocation of certain spaces, relocation of the main entrance, the provisions of existing beds where existing inpatient beds currently are. Those are going to be refinished for future office and administrative use, and the like. The, as it states in the agenda, the schematic preliminary design phase has been completed. The reason we have the first amendment to the agreement, which is the next item, is that will be the agreement which directs the architect to continue their services, including but not limited to the design development documents and the construction documents. We have Courtney here today to address any questions you may have. I'll tell you, with respect to item B, and perhaps C, and perhaps D, that would be the purpose of, a partial purpose of a special meeting, which has been called for Wednesday at 5:00, trying to get it done at the earliest time. And I'll just go ahead and address these, because they're really all together as kind of a concept.
Do you want me to read them in, or?
Yeah, go ahead and read them in, and then let's all address them all together.
Okay, item B, consider approval of the First Amendment Agreement dated September 22nd, 2022 with the Health Facilities Group LLC, doing business as HFG Architect, extending and enlarging the design services work to include but not limited to the completion of the design development document and construction documents on Stillwater Medical Center Perry Hospital renovation project. Item C, appropriate $846,000 to accomplish the First Amendment for reserve funds for the general fund, within the general fund of the city. Item D, approving intra-fund borrowing agreement with the Perry Facilities Authority, providing for the reimbursement by the Perry Facilities Authority an amount of spending, and amounts expended by the city for the architect's cost in design in Stillwater Medical Center Perry Hospital renovation project. E, acknowledge receipt of the rule Emergency Hospital License effective April 1st, 2023.
Thank you, Mayor. So, getting back to this, we did include some comments that I had about the architect's agreement, and those were negotiated today with the architect. They were provided last week, but, you know, we had to get everyone on the same page and able to negotiate. And I'll tell you that that agreement has been successfully negotiated, but, and I'll tell you that what you've read and the points that I brought up, I would say 90% of those are incorporated into the agreement. So if you read that sheet, that's what you'll be getting, an amended document that has those points in the agreement, including an increase in the professional liability insurance, some restrictions that have been removed, some limitation of costs. And the most important thing is timing, okay? Because I think, as we've told you at the last meeting, we do have this giant opportunity for this new market tax credit. Part of it is that if they're going to pick our project, they want to know that our project is going to go this year, because the tax credits are forward this year, and certain amounts of money have to be expended by certain times. So the most important part of that agreement is that the design documents, not the final construction documents, the design documents, have to be finished by August 1st and have to be presented, they will then be presented to the construction manager, who will give us that maximum guaranteed price by August 31st. Now, we think that that very may come in just two weeks, like maybe, you know, August 15th, or maybe no later than the 3rd, but they wanted some flexibility in there. By having it, the guaranteed maximum price delivered by the construction manager, we would then know how to price the loan or the borrowing, including the tax increment, or, excuse me, new market tax credits. We would know how much of those would be allocated. So that's one of the most important things about this agreement, to get that done in a timely fashion. And so those items were agreed to. Now, I didn't, I didn't have, and I hadn't reviewed, the agreement with the construction manager, and that's the second reason that we're going to have that meeting, because it's important. I mean, I don't want to wait two weeks. I think it's important to get these things approved, because we're the ones pressing this timeline, because of this new market tax credit money, which in essence will be up to $7 million free for the community to be used. And not all of that, some has to be paid in costs. And will we be allocated all that? I don't know. But the email that I have says that that could be the allocation that comes to us. So, so at the, at the meeting that we've at least scheduled, if, you know, a quorum of you can be there, on Wednesday at 5:00 right here, we're going to have B on there, and we're going to have approval of the construction management agreement on there. The construction management pays, and what's negotiated at this point is 3.5% of the construction cost. And because that's paid for the construction cost, it's not necessary to appropriate at this time, nor do the inter-fund borrowing agreement with respect to that. That will flow from the loan. Now, there is $12,500 that has to be paid in that agreement. But if you approve C, which is $846,000, and is actually more than what you really need, because, you know, you've already appropriated $101,000, as you remember, to do the preliminary design phase, schematic preliminary design phase, that will be more than sufficient to pay for that architect's agreement, and then any dollars that we need to pay over on the construction manager agreement, absent the funding that would come in. Now, I didn't call for a Perry Facilities Authority meeting. So, I mean, if you decide, and I've already prepared the agenda, if you decide to push A through D to that meeting, which you can do, I would ask that when we meet as the Perry Facilities Authority, you go ahead and approve that inter-fund borrowing agreement, because I don't have that set for a meeting, and I don't have time now to get that set for a meeting on Wednesday. And you could approve that agreement and provide that the amount of funding that would be in that agreement would be consistent with that amount in the city agreement. So just make a contingent upon that. That way, if you approved it all at that time, it would be done, and we wouldn't need to come back, and you would be authorized. So, that's what's going on. All good things, all good things. We're pressing forward. We've got some real free money that we think that we have a real shot at. This is going to cost, you know, this is going to cost some dollars. Now, one of the items, we might as well bring it up, it's the 800-pound gorilla in the room, and it's Curtis's issue. He texts me about it all the time, and all of us are concerned about that, and that is Blue Cross Blue Shield. You know, will that be, you know, part of the, part of the hospital deal? And I think Courtney can address this, but at this point, I'd let you speak to it. Well, I mean, go ahead and speak to it. And I'll just say that it does matter. I mean, it does matter to the city, and it does matter to Ditchwich and Dorro, but, you know, over and above that, to me, you know, doing this deal, getting the hospital licensed and operating on, as a REH, which is now done, that's E, and that is done, the license has been issued. And interestingly, the thing about that that's so interesting is our lease expired. You know, the old one expired March 31st, 2023. This thing got approved the next day, which I find, you know, kind of amazing. Now, it did get continued under the amended agreement, but it's kind of neat that we got it the next day. And that is the way forward for us to operate this hospital in the black. But go ahead, and if you want to address the schematic design phase, or take any questions on that, and then the Blue Cross Blue Shield issue, I know everyone's, you know, concerned about that.
Well, from a 500,000 view, Bryce has kind of filled you in on what we're looking at. Mr. Coffee's been at those meetings, so he can kind of fill you in too on what we're looking at, on how the hospital will be structured with the renovation. But if you guys have specific questions, go ahead and ask him about the renovation.
Who owns a CT scanner?
Stillwater.
Stillwater?
The one that's currently in?
No, the new one.
The new one?
Mm-hmm.
It will be you guys.
This will be part of our purchase?
If it's paid for at a construction dollars, it stays with this facility.
Anything on, any update on Blue Cross?
So they are still negotiating, and I will let you guys know, it is just as big a deal for Stillwater as it is any of, anybody that's covered under Blue Cross and Blue Shield. I will say that Stillwater's attorneys, Blue Cross's attorneys, and now there has been a third-party negotiator hired that is in the room. I can't really talk about specifics during the negotiation, but we want an agreement just as well as everybody else does, but we also want fair compensation for the services that we provide. One thing that we, Stillwater will be asking Blue Cross for is, instead of having that cliff for May 1st, if an agreement can't be reached, will they continue to just pace our current rate till the end of the year, give companies and give people time to get on a new plan with something else? I don't know if Blue Cross will agree to that, but that is something that we will be asking for.
Do you know if Blue Cross is in negotiation with any other major facilities in Stato Polina?
I don't know that. I do know in the past, even Integris has, when, you know, gone to the night, or the final hour before they've struck a deal with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, it was not the first time Blue Cross and Blue Shield has gone into the wire on getting an agreement in place with other facilities.
Cool.
They did that with OU Health last year.
And usually it's a three-year agreement, so everybody's agreements at different times and different places.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Integris is not the only provider around here that's using Blue Cross Blue Shield, OSU and other.
OSU is a very big one, right? Yes. Ditchwich is a little different, because they're adamant soda, but Blue Cross is Blue Cross, so.
Right.
Is that what you guys use at Blue Cross? I mean, employees?
Stillwater? No, we're self-insured.
Self-insured, okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Courtney.
So, so as I stated, we could, you know, we could push A, B, C, and D to the, to the next agreement, or to the next meeting, if you wanted to. You know, when I give you an agreement to approve, I want it to be final. You know, I want it to be the agreement that's going to be done. I don't have that today, although I have almost all of it, but I didn't have all, there are two provisions that they still have to talk about. One is the limitation of cost of $5,000 reimbursable expenses, that's what they're doing, and the other one is more significant. But, you know, I mean, if you wanted to, you could, since we're meeting on Wednesday, you ought to take a look at it at that point. I think that's responsible.
So I have several further questions.
Yes.
About the agreement, but you also mentioned, before we get that far, you mentioned the contractor's agreement.
Yes.
Have we even seen that one yet?
Yes. Yeah, you haven't, you haven't seen it yet.
No, that's me.
No, you haven't seen it yet. That, that is.
But we're going to approve that Wednesday?
Well, you know, basically, I've made a few changes to it, just a very few, not like this agreement. The key to it is a, is the percentage, the 3.5%. But I, I put my eyes on it today, okay? It was in an encrypted email that I received that I didn't unencrypt, because I'm not very good on encrypting and decrypting things. And so it had been sent to me, but I had sent out the agenda to kind of everyone, including Stillwater and all, and no one picked up that that agreement wasn't on this agenda. To me, I hadn't received it yet, okay? But I've spent all afternoon on it. I have made my comments to it. I have sent it to the city clerk, and she can forward it to you this evening. She can forward it to you this evening.
But is there an agreement to Stillwater, or have they approved your changes? Are there changes?
No, it's, once again, just presented the same as this agreement is. I've sent it off to Stillwater to get with, with the contract manager, and so that we can get together.
So is there a possibility it won't come back by Wednesday?
There's, there's not that, there's not, there's not, there's not really that many things. It had provided for 4%, the rate is 3.5%. There, I raised the professional liability item. I want to, you know, they have four pages of costs in it, and yet they say all the costs are covered under the, under the maximum, you know, guaranteed price, okay? Which begs the question, why do you have three pages of costs listed when they're all covered under the maximum guaranteed price? Any other costs have to be agreed to in writing, so I kind of simplified that to make that simple. So there wasn't a whole lot in that agreement. But it is important to, of course, have agreements that are acceptable to both parties. I can tell you, as amended, you know, as amended, as I've amended that agreement, I'm comfortable with it. Just like this agreement, as amended, I'm comfortable with the changes.
I have several concerns still in this, given the limited time to digest this. I'm not, I don't, maybe you can provide some further context, but I don't know. I guess to start up, there's, I've got several notes, but 12, page 12.
Yeah.
363. Starting out there, says the architect shall review and certify the amounts due to the contractor and shall issue certificates in such amounts. Does that mean they're actually cutting the check?
No. They, they, the certificates are really a schedule of values, like we always, you know, get on, on construction. They use the word certificate under architect agreement. They use schedule of values in engineering agreements. So no, that would come to us, and, you know, we have to approve each payment.
Okay. And then it goes on in 3632. The issuance of the certificate payment shall not be, shall not be a representation that the architect has made exhaustive or continuous onsite inspections.
No, that's, that's always a protection that architects and engineers put in their contracts. You know, they're responsible for design. Engineers are responsible for design. They provide in their contracts, like in this one, there's X number of visits they'll have to the site. But in both architects and engineering's contracts, they're not responsible for the contractor to fail, that fails to perform the duties in accordance with the contract, okay? And they try to write that out. And that's one way they write it out. We're not responsible for the contractor, you know, for the contractor's mistakes, and we're not responsible to make exhaustive inspections in order to ensure that the contractor is doing it in accordance. That's a fairly standard thing for architects. That's picked up under inspection.
So I guess to continue that, under 3662, it says they will conduct conformance, the inspections with the owner. I'm not reading it word for word, but, so where is the, where is the accountability?
Well, they, they have listed, they have listed, well, you know, their duties do the plans inspection. They have listed here, I think they come out to the site, it's on page 16. They're going to come to the site 36 times. That's under 4.2.3.
So who is responsible for the accountability? I get that the architect may not usually be, but.
The, the, the construction manager, who, he's the one responsible.
So that is in that agreement, then, that we haven't seen?
Yes. I mean, he's the one that sets that guaranteed, that guaranteed maximum price. And you have both him, and you have the contractor, and you have bonds. You know, we still are going to have performance bonds, maintenance bonds, and statutory bonds in place, because the pieces of it have to be bid in accordance with the Public Competitor Bid Law of 1974. So you've got that. But the construction manager plays a role of inspector, and he'll have someone on his team doing that for that. He gets paid, you know, 3.5%. But those are, those are, those are good questions, because when you read that language, there, it's like they're trying to write out responsibility, and that's always an attention getter.
Sure. And, and again, like I said, context, it may be, I haven't seen the other agreement yet, so that may have provided more. But there's, there's other things along with the project that, again, maybe, who owns that, that I'm not, not aware of, but, for example, the, like in 114, we say nine months from the executed contract. Is that, is that the entire, is that where? Is that, is that the entire, is that what we're expecting? Is the entire project in there?
Uh, no, that is where one of the changes is made. That's one of the key changes.
Okay.
And that's where we have language in there that will be coming. It says they may, must provide the documents necessary for the, uh, construction manager to give us that maximum guaranteed price by August 1st. That's exact, that you're, you're right on point. That's right where that's going to be written. And in the construction manager's contract, it says upon receipt of that on August 1st, they will provide us the, the maximum guaranteed price on or before August 31st.
Okay.
So that we can get those numbers and be able to compete successfully for this new market tax credit.
And then maybe somewhere too, but should we, should we have 1, 111 and 112 kind of broken out into schedule so that we, we have?
You know, uh, God, if, if you don't like this one, you're going to hate the construction manager one because, I mean, a lot, because a lot of those dates, you know, are literally to be determined by, uh, to be determined in, in the future. I mean, if they're, they're, uh, the, the key to us, the, the key is, is obtaining the, uh, being able to obtain the financing and to obtain the, the, the free dollars. Of course, nobody wants to spend any more time. Time is money. And if, if it's a lump sum or it's a guaranteed, everybody wants to get that project over. Uh, one of the things I deleted out of the construction manager's agreement is a COVID clause that's that big. I mean, everything goes out the window if there's, we all have to deal with that, you know? So that's one of the items that I've taken out. This one doesn't have a COVID clause. I, I will tell you that this is a standard AI, A, you know, agreement, uh, and.
Is it what you used up north? Or I mean, is this the same, same one you saw in Blackwell or?
Uh, I did not represent, uh, them. I, I will tell you that, uh, that from what I've learned is that, uh, most, many, uh, uh, public entities don't even review it and, and comment on it and make changes to it. Okay. But I always have and, uh, because you know, I read the words and the words are all important.
It is the same architectural group.
Same group?
Yeah, it is the same, it is the same group, yes.
It's very, very, very close to it.
I figured. I mean, this is.
But, but I didn't represent, uh, the hospital.
Sure.
Uh, up there. I represented the city, but, and I participated in it, but not in this contract. I did not.
So 115, what does the construction manager at risk mean? What does that?
Well, uh, he takes a, he takes a look at the project.
Is that basically saying?
He, he takes a look at the project and he says this project will not cost, I guarantee that this project will not cost more than, let's just say, $9.5 million and he's stuck with that price. And he does that by contacting people, not by taking bids under the Public Competitive Bid Act. I mean, you know, we're not pushing this another 21 days plus notice, plus get them in, scratch. It's really on him. And, uh, but the, the issue is always how much, uh, how much leeway, you know, does he want, you know, in, 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 in providing that? Uh, because you know, I mean, you say $20 million, right? And then, I mean, but that wouldn't be, it, it has to be reasonable. It has to be consistent and it has to bear base. Part of, part of that contract is talking about all of the termination clauses. When you can terminate the construction manager at what point? Uh, and all that's going to be subject to our conversation because, uh, that's about three pages long of different provisions on how to terminate the construction manager. I want to make that a whole lot clearer. I want it to be clear that, that the maximum guaranteed price has to be reasonable. You know, it has to be a reasonable amount. Uh, and, and if it's not, that we're not owing a bunch of money. So that's that work. And of course, you know, if, if it's not done by Wednesday, I mean, we can do it, uh, we can do it next, uh, you know, next Monday, you know? And, and if we're not there, I don't want to have a meeting. I want to have this wrapped up, you know, as quickly as we can where I can tell you I'm comfortable with the agreement. I could tell you I'm comfortable with the architect's agreement. I mean, I've gone through it three times. There's lots of changes in it. And we went through it today for an hour and a half. Meredith was in the room, right?
Yes.
You, you didn't think I was going to get everything on the page, did you?
Um, no, he was pushing back at first and then by the end he was like, whatever you want, just whatever.
Yeah. I mean, we, we got, we got, we got what we, what I, what I, not everything, but I got a lot of what we'd asked for, which I think is all protection. Well, one of the issues here is I'm just a construction manager and I'll tell you this, it's insurance. Insurance on the building. Okay? And how much insurance we have to carry on the building. This is my last email to Stephen. We don't carry insurance on the building. You do, you know? And so how, how do those provisions in the construction manager agreement jive? How much more of that, uh, of the, uh, of the firing casualty and that, and, and general liability do we have to cover because, because you guys covered? So that's something that I sent kind of at the end of the day back to Stephen said, you know, we, we both need to analyze this because, you know, I, I didn't have a copy of their insurance policy. I know what the limits are, but I have a copy of it. Uh, the other thing is I was going to send a copy of those requirements off to O-MAG in case we had to provide something in addition to what's already provided under that, under that contract. So, uh, I'm, I'm doing a thorough analysis of, of this, ensuring that the public is protected as best as reasonably possible. And of course, you know, these professionals, I don't know how used, used to, uh, these kind of changes they are, but I don't really care. I mean, it's public money. It's the public treasury and I want to ensure that, uh, everybody's happy with it.
Well, uh, you know, I guess, uh, yeah, it's a big project. So that's, is there room to, it, uh, I guess, can I get with you maybe and discuss any more?
Absolutely.
Things and see if there's any.
Oh, absolutely.
At least provide context because I, I need to finish digest on this.
Right. And, and we will send the other one out and I'll tell you, if we can't get that, we will let you know tomorrow. It, it may be better, you know, I, I gotta tell you, you know, when it didn't look like we were going to get it, I just told clerk, the manager and the clerk, let's set up the earliest, you know, meeting that we can do, which was Wednesday. It very well may be better to, to wait a week, get these to you, let you, you know, read them, make sure that it's okay with the, uh, insurance company because a week isn't going to hurt us. We're not going to move those dates.
Another question.
And, and, and I think that may be, I think that that may be, uh, that may be smart. I'll, I'll tell you something else that we put in, in there. You know, the, the percentage is 9.4% of the final construction cost, but, but we're getting, this is the other bigger thing that I said. We're getting bids nowadays which, you know, are, are large for no reason. It's not just inflation. They're just throwing in huge amounts of, of, of extra profit in there. Okay. So, so part of the provision, and we'll have to see exactly how it's written. We talked through it today, is although we've got that 9.4%, uh, we're going to agree to look at this again when the prices come in and ensure that that hasn't occurred. Okay? And if that does occur, then we're going to discount the fee by the amount of that. In our conversation, we called it that delta, but we're going to discount it by that because, you know, it could be significant. Let's say it's $2 million. You know, 9.4% on $2 million is, you know, $180,000 and we're trying to protect the public. So, you know, we have thought about that. Uh, you shouldn't get a percent on puff, right? Because there's work to be done. Uh, we, I couldn't lock in a lump sum price because we don't know how it's coming, but you shouldn't get that percent on puff, which is what I'm going to call. So that, that, that's another provision that's coming back.
I think that was some of my concern here, but maybe seeing the other agreement will answer some of my concerns as well.
Yeah. Uh, this is, uh, I have done other construction manager agreements. Uh, these are not real new, but you know, in terms of me practicing almost 50 years, it's fairly new stuff, uh, doing it this way. But a lot of agreements are, are being done like this because you can get a guaranteed price and it puts somebody directly responsible that's a real person and not just Joe the inspector. Oh, sorry, I missed that. You know, I mean, it, 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 uh, it puts some real responsibility into the facility.
Lot of help with those feralites, that project.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll, I'll reach out as I.
Yeah. And, and I'll send that, uh, I will, uh, send that out. It, it, uh, it, it's not as detailed. I don't have a memo on it. I have comments off to the side, but there are some things. You, you'll see where I'm stressed, you know, where, where I want some, some, uh, some explanation or some more detail.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we, we should approve item E, correct?
Yeah. Yeah. I think you can approve item E. But I do think when we go to the, the, the PFA, I, I do think we should approve the interlocal agreement on that side and then just make it on the number being consistent with the city. That way, uh, that is if we have an opportunity to do it on Wednesday. If not, in next Monday, we can do it. We, we can amend that agreement. You know, if it doesn't get approved, it's our agreement. So.
We'll talk about that.
We can control that.
Do we get a motion on item E, counsel?
Before we do, I'd like to thank the legislature, legislators and Chuck Hall for getting all that work done and all motions approved E.
Second.
Very, very exciting. It's the first one in the state and I can confirm, I might be the first one in the nation. So.
Wow.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Coldar?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes. Thank you, counsel. Item 8, consider approval of resolution number 202303 of the city of Perry, Oklahoma, establishing a fair housing policy for the city of Perry, Oklahoma.
I think we detailed in this item that Perry's all about fair housing. We have, we have an article in a chapter about fair housing in our code. Uh, you know, if there's discrimination, there's a right to bring, uh, grievance. Uh, there never has been, uh, but there is that right. In order to, uh, provide, uh, and to receive, uh, federal grants, uh, and that would be both airports, CDVG and the like, we have to guarantee a policy of non-discrimination. And in this instance, a policy of non-discrimination with respect to housing. So we would ask that you approve this, uh, resolution. Uh, we pretty much do this every time, uh, we have a CDVG project to renew our support of, of this public purpose.
Make the motion that we approve as motion 202303, uh, establishing a fair housing policy in Perry.
Second.
Do we get a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Coldar?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes. Thank you. Item 9, consider approval of the real estate contract with Hughes Properties LLC, a domestic limited liability company for the purchase of lot 24, lot 25, lot 26, block five, and the Hughes Sorrel addition, and lot one, block seven, and the Hughes Sorrel addition, and lot 13, lot six, and the Hughes Sorrel addition, and lot 22, 23, and block one, and the Hughes Sorrel addition. So we brought this to council last time. Uh, they had all those lots broke out individually and what they, you know, wanted for them. And, uh, there was some discussion that we weren't interested in a couple of them because they weren't beneficial to us. And, uh, through further discussion, I'm assuming with Tim Dalzell and Bryce, they said, look, let's take $6,000 for all of them. So, uh, it's kind of like all or nothing. So we're probably getting several of them for free compared to what we were getting before. We like to, I'm sorry, Scott.
We are getting them free, but what have we got to do with them?
Mole.
Mole. But do you want the other lots?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that's the consideration back.
Got it.
To us and it will be. I mean, we, we get what we need. We get a little bit more than we need, but we get what we need.
Okay. We'll turn on some of the work.
You can make that phone call.
I think we previously discussed this would come from the drainage fund. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes. And the way the contract's set up, I mean, we're paying $3,000 for those two lots to come from the drainage fund. The others will show both in the closing document and all that it's, uh, that those lots are donated.
Yeah. I think this pretty much eliminates any other Hughes Sorrel properties that they have in that particular area. That's correct.
Everything else is owned by Heritage, right?
Right.
In that area.
Right.
They do have a couple of pieces here and there, but for the most part in this particular subdivision, they're, they're out of the picture with this.
Did we work anything with the church?
Uh, not yet.
Okay. Okay. Get a motion on this, please, counsel.
Motion to approve the contract as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Coldar?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes. Thank you, counsel. Item 10, consider approval of traffic, uh, signal maintenance agreement in the annual amount of $2,520 with signal tech for signal lights in the downtown Perry. Uh, Brian Wheatley uh, says was going to be here to have this discussion with us and give us some insight on why he wants that. Uh, he's not well. Larry, do you have any, any insight on what, what's going on?
I do not have his exact reason for that, but obviously, um, it, it helps when we have another set of eyes on this so that when something happens, we can just call somebody and they come out, they arrange their own guys, um, and come and, uh, deal with whatever issue we have there. Uh, obviously we don't want the lights to go on, um, having any issues like we've had in the past. Have a little bit, um, faster response and that will be something that this agreement will help with.
I guess one of our questions was, so this amount, that's just for them to come look at it? That doesn't pay for any repairs or anything, right?
Well, it says it covers preventative and scheduled maintenance, but anything above that.
Larry, do you have any, any insight on what, what's going on?
I do not have his exact reason for that, but obviously, um, it, it helps when we have another set of eyes on this so that, that when something happens, we can just call somebody. They come out, they arrange their own guys, um, and come and, uh, deal with whatever issue we have there. Uh, obviously, we don't want the lights to go on, um, having any issues like we've had in the past. Have a little bit, uh, faster response and that will be something that this agreement will help with.
I guess one of our questions would be, so this amount, that's just for them to come look at it? That doesn't pay for any repairs or anything, right?
Well, it says it covers preventative and scheduled maintenance. But anything above that is under this contracted price, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
It's just that we don't know what preventative and scheduled maintenance do this on there.
Right.
Or who, who schedules it or anything, what's that?
Or how often that needs to be.
Right.
Is it once a year?
So can we table this until Brian's available?
Yes.
But I would like to hear his, him put on this.
Well, that's, that's, that would be my recommendation because I, you had questions, you need to speak to him about it, yeah.
Do we have a motion to table? Motion to table? Further discussion?
She's second.
Oh, or her, Gloria, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Coldar?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes, thank you. Item eleven, any new business that needs to come before the council this evening? Hearing none. Uh, item twelve, motion on the adjournment, please.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown? Bond?
Yes.
Coldar?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes. All right, I'd like to call the order of regular meeting of the Perry Municipal Authority, April third, twenty-twenty-three at seven oh-three. Roll call, please.
Wines?
Here.
Marshall?
Here.
White?
Here.
Coffee?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Williams? Bond?
Here.
Coldar?
Here.
Stroller?
Here. First item is the consent agenda. Is there minutes from last meeting?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Roll call, please.
Second.
Oh, second, roll call, please.
Second. Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Coldar?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes, thank you. Item four, comments most civil pertaining to the items on the PMA. Hearing none. Item five, proclamation accommodation and portion required by the governing body. Item six, any new business that needs to come before the authority. Item seven, motion on adjournment, please.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Wines?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Coldar?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes, thank you. Put that in seven oh-two or seven oh-three.
Seven oh-two.
I seen it change. First reason I said seven oh-three. I liked that you never flinched. All right, to call order the regular meeting of the Perry Facilities Authority, April third, twenty-twenty-three at seven oh-four. That was a one-minute meeting. That's pretty cool. That's the pro call.
Wines?
Trying to keep Derek confused.
Marshall?
Here.
White?
Here.
Coffee?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Williams? Bond?
Here.
Coldar?
Here.
Stroller?
Here, thank you. Item one is the consent agenda, one item, uh, last meeting's minutes.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Wine?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Coldar?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes, thank you. Item two, approve an interfund borrowing agreement with the City of Perry, Oklahoma, providing for the reimbursement by the Perry Facilities Authority of the amount expended by the city for the architect's cost in designing the Stillwater Medical Center, Perry Hospital renovation project.
You know, and now that I've thought about this, you know, and, and listened to the, to the council, I, I really think, uh, so that we don't waste time, it, it's probably better to continue this to a special meeting to be held next Monday rather than Wednesday. I, I don't want to rush this. I want to give you a weekend to take a look at documents. This is very important and we'll get all the numbers right and all that. Uh, one week's not going to hurt anybody. We also need to get with Stillwater. You need to, we need to get a time to get on the phone. I would like to have a conversation with Stephen and with you first, kind of go over the agreement and then call the construction manager. And you need to look at your insurance. I need to send it off to O-MAG maybe, and there's just a lot of work. So I think a motion to continue this to a special meeting to be held on Monday. And you could do it at, uh, at whatever time, uh, if you like, six fifteen or five o'clock.
Is, is everybody available for that?
Yeah, I mean, if you are.
I will not be able to turn, is it just coming Monday?
Yeah, it would be a week from today.
That is the time. I previously made plans for that Monday. But you don't have to, difficult, man, there's going to be a, I mean, a...
I'm not coming. Gloria's not coming.
The rest of them, that's fine.
I'm good.
I'm good. What's happening with the regular meeting, Tom?
Okay, six fifteen, okay. So somebody want to make that motion? And, and can, and along with that, cancel the meeting, uh, that's been scheduled for Wednesday.
I make a motion to, uh, do, cancel the meeting on Wednesday and, uh, defer this until a special meeting on Monday at six fifteen, Monday, the ninth, uh, tenth.
That's ten?
At six fifteen PM. Table.
Do you have a second?
I'll second up.
Roll call, please.
Who's joining up? Wine?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Coldar?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes, thank you. Motion on item three, adjournment?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Wine?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Coldar?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.